That's all we have for this season.
We do have classes.
Oh, sorry, different, on the levee, sorry, that was just a levee piece. And then I'll turn it over to my.
So after the last meeting, it was requested to add the target and discussion caps on the same report. Also updated the average projections with our most recent enrollment numbers. So you will see slight changes on one K through fifth grade on the average projection for next year. But just not much else to change that, just wanted to get the targets and discussion caps on the same report as requested.
Any questions on that or things? Okay. Couple of things, next topic is superintendent evaluation procedures. I believe we are going to be sending, sending out the link. And did you also want to discuss or?
Yeah, so based upon the feedback from the mid-year, what was very clear to me, based upon our discussion, is that how some board directors are interpreting the questions vary immensely. And, and so, and it could have been something as slight as one word that maybe set the whole understanding of that question, which then resulted in various rank values, et cetera. So what I will offer to each board director, it's the same format that you just saw at mid-year. But I would like to walk through with Dr. Zumbush and I, or just me, depends, you know, so that we all, we can kind of level set the context for all the questions, so that you're all answering them in the same understanding of what it's actually asking. I think we tried to give some illustrative bullets and things of that nature too, that's not exhaustive. You all know a variety of reference points, I mean, everything that comes out of these sessions can be data points for a lot of those questions too. And I'll certainly be offering that as artifacts. But that was the big thing I took away, Chair Franz, was to make sure I do a quick level set, so that any questions of understanding of the interpretation of the questions you all have, so that you're all answering them as consistently as possible versus one director saying, oh, I thought that word meant this, and another one said, I thought it meant this, and then we have vastly different outcomes based upon independent definitions of words.
So are you going to be adding that into the descriptions when the evaluations?
Yeah, we'll try to, we'll try to kind of operationalize it a little bit, but then I will also be requesting during some of our one-on-one time that we have, to kind of walk through that with you all in advance, so that you have some level setting.
So the link will be available when?
I think it's in June that you all do the final email.
Okay, so when we get that, I will send out an informational message, and I believe through Martha, and I just want to let you know that, that the date, we're not going to budge on the dates. If it's due on a certain time, it's due on a certain time.
By June 30th.
By June 30th.
And we have to have it all, we, whoa.
We have to have it all done, right.
And report it back, so.
And we want to give everyone at least one full or at least two full weeks to fill it out. So, and because of the work that Director Bullion and I will have to go through in order to compile the information, we do need at least a week to do that.
Yep.
So, so when we get that, hopefully in mid-May, we'll be sending out the dates and putting a hard stop on it. As far as the school board annual evaluation, we do that ourselves, we're going to do it the same way as we did last year. A link will go out, that is not a requirement to have it done by June 30th, but we do like to have it done within the fiscal year, we can discuss it at, in July or August, and that is our own evaluation of ourselves. And that link has already been discussed with the MSBA, and I'm hoping to get the same thing that we did last year, we will not be having the MSBA come in and do a recap for us, we're going to be doing that ourselves. And now we have a whole bunch of proclamations. So I'm going to split these up. And, sorry, I had it up here. So I'll just name who, if you guys are okay with it, if you don't like the one I've given you. Amy, will you do national, Amy, Director Crosby, will you do National Teacher Appreciation Week? And then if I could have Director Atkinson do School Principals Appreciation Week? And then if I could have Director Olstad do the Child Nutrition? And then if I could have Director Burnet do National School Nurses Day? Is that okay? All right, so, starting with Director Crosby.
I'd love to. May 6th through 10th is National Teacher Appreciation Week, which is always celebrated in our district very thoroughly. So I'll read the proclamation, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes May 6th through 10th, 2024 as National Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers are essential to the success of our students. This week we celebrate our thanks and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. Whereas National Appreciation Day is being celebrated on May 7th, 2024. Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. Whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools teachers for supporting the education of our students, and declares May 6th through 10th, 2024 to be Teacher Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you, and I'll just share a few words on behalf of all the staff and administration here in the district. Our, our teachers are truly the bedrock. You know, when we just talked, when I just used the example of coffee beans, they are, they are our best bean, right, to get the sweetest cup of coffee we can, and I just want to thank our teachers for the amount of hours and time and commitment that they put in daily into the evenings, the sacrifices that they make on behalf of their own families, many of them, to support and service the, the families within our communities, I can't thank them enough. And I also want to just acknowledge that this year through our negotiations has been a real tough one for, for us. And I think it landed in a, a good spot for us to really, you know, honor them with support. And I think me as a leader, I learned a lot through that process, and have reflected a lot on that process as well as we move forward. And again, I just, I just want to thank them and continue to invite their voice to the conversations that we have, the decisions, you know, conversations that we're having tonight, their voice matters in all of this. So thank you to all of our amazing teachers for all that they do day in and day out.
Thank you.
Director Atkinson? Yeah, thank you. And coming up here at the end of the month, April 29th through May 3rd, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes April 29th through May 3rd as School Principals Appreciation Week. Our principals provide essential support to our more than 8,700 PLSAS students and more than 1,400 employees. This week we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential leaders. Whereas National School Principals Day is May 1st, 2024. Whereas school principals are educational visionaries, instructional leaders to students and staff, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program managers, and are entrusted with the education and development of young people. Whereas school principals provide students with opportunities and guidance to ensure their success and inspire a passion for learning. Whereas school principals work with all stakeholders to foster a sense of community and pride within our schools and district. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to our district principals for supporting the education of our students, and proclaims April 29th through May 3rd, 2024 to be School Principals Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you for that declaration, Board. Definitely want to call attention to that paragraph, because it speaks about the varying roles that they play. And they truly do play those varying roles, and I might be able to add a few more to that list that they do on a daily basis. And we have an amazing group of leaders that are in each of our sites, providing the strength of leadership to those sites. I have the fortunate opportunity to work side by side with them on a daily basis. Not certainly at each building each day, as much as I'd like to, but certainly in communication in one form or another with probably two to three on average per day on a variety of topics. And they are phenomenal leaders who care at their core about what goes on each and every day. And just can't thank them enough for the strength of their leadership and the pride that they take in how they go about doing that work each and every day.
All right. Director Olstad?
I get to talk about food. Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week and National School Hero Day, April 29th through May 3rd, 2024. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes April 29th and through May 3rd as Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week. Our child nutrition staff are committed to supporting our children by providing nutritious and home-cooked meals to our more than 8,700 students. This week we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential individuals. Whereas the School Nutrition Association declares May 3rd as School Lunch Hero Day to highlight the difference school nutrition staff make for every child who comes through the cafeteria. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 24 full-time, 65 part-time, and 16 substitute child nutrition employees, as well as a child nutrition director, child nutrition assistant director, child nutrition support specialist, and child nutrition coordinator. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' child nutrition staff serve approximately 1,050,000 meals every year, averaging 6,000 meals each school day. Whereas child nutrition staff are essential workers dedicated to preparing and distributing healthy and delicious meals directly to our students, all while providing a warm and welcoming environment. Whereas child nutrition staff strive to serve fresh, locally sourced foods. Whereas child nutrition staff keep parents and students informed of all menus, allergens, nutrition, and food descriptions by updating the online menu and mobile app. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' child nutrition staff for supporting the nutritional needs and success of our students, and declares April 29th through May 3rd to be Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you, Doctor, Director Olstad and the Board. I would just like to add to that, my team just never ceases to amaze me. They take every curveball that has ever been thrown at them, this year it's Free Meals for Kids, which we had to figure out in a very, very short amount of time. In addition to that, we added nine additional farmers that we're dealing, that we are working with and partnering with this year. Managing all kinds of plates in the air at the same time and doing it all with love, so. Really proud of my team, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Director Burnet?
National School Nurse Day, May 8th, 2024. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes May 8th, 2024 as National School Nurse Day. This day we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Where students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses and health office staff have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses and health office staff address the home and community factors, social determinants that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses and health office staff are professional nurses that advance the wellbeing, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses and health office staff act as, act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of the children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses and health office staff support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses and health office staff are members of school-based teams, school health services, 504 IEP disaster emergency planning, providing care coordination to address the school population. And whereas school nurses and health office staff understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses and health office staff and their efforts to meet the needs of today's students by providing and advocating for quality student-centered care, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses and health office staff to contribute to our local communities by supporting students to stay healthy, in school, safe, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area School nursing staff and declares May 8th, 2024 to be National School Nurses Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Well, a great team worthy of that very long proclamation. So, we have four LSNs in our district, one of them being our health services coordinator. Then we have three other LSNs, we have 14 health aides, we have some one-to-one nurses as well, but I want to give you some fun numbers on that. They average 777 office visits a day to our health office. They support over 6,000 unique health conditions. And year-to-date, we've had 109,944 visits to our health offices. So they are busy, a very busy team dedicated to support the wellbeing of our students, whether it's giving them a soothing Band-Aid or supporting the really complex medical needs of some of our students and everything in between. So it's great to honor their compassion and expertise. They do create a safe and nurturing environment so our students can thrive, and their contributions truly make a difference, so, thank you.
Thank you.
109,000.
So far this year, 109,944 visits, yes. Busy crew.
What did you say with the per day again?
777 is the average.
That is incredible, incredible, thank you, school nurses.
Okay, so moving on to policy, we're going to start with policy 504.
I think we have 425?
25.
425? 4.25, I think it's 425.
We started with the cross off.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll start with 425 then.
So, I'll have Dr. Edwards jump in here as well, but after we took this policy back from a previous work session and did some deeper dive reviews with some other school districts, requirements on statute, we brought it back to the Policy Advisory Committee to recommend actually striking the policy, it is not a required policy through statute. It is, and not through, and MSBA does not require it either, so I'll let Dr. Edwards speak a little bit more to the reason for, for striking it.
Yeah, thank you. As you, Executive Director Herman alluded to also, that deeper dive, we looked at neighboring districts, districts across the metro, and in my look at that, certainly didn't, it wasn't an exhaustive list across the metro and across the state, but only found in comparative districts, I looked at seven, and found it existed in one, one district remained in policy, have that policy in place. Also looking at the current reality of systems that are in place, as well as other policies that speak to some of the work. I spoke to that at the Policy Advisory Committee as well. And finally, with regard to a lot of our current work around staff development, and we'll be sharing more as this evolves here throughout the remaining months of the legislative section, the REACT in particular, other things of that nature are currently, have been dictated by that, which limits the work of the district staff development committee in guiding the work for our district. So based upon those criteria, I brought forward a recommendation to the Policy Committee.
I'm okay with that, is everybody else okay with striking it?
I have a question. So in Minnesota statute, which is 122A.60 Staff Development Program, so similar to what we just, you know, discovered in the Curriculum Advisory Committee, there is statute that oversees this, and it specifically says in the statute that the Board must establish an Advisory Staff Development Committee to develop the plan, assist site professional development teams in developing a site plan, assist it with the goals of the plan, and evaluate staff development efforts at the site level. So my question is, is if we're striking the policy, which I understand what you're saying, but my question is, where, what are we doing to follow the statute? Like, where is this advisory committee that the Board must establish? That is in the statute that says that that is our role, that we need to do that?
Technically, the Board has delegated that for the staff development. And we've done that traditionally, and most other districts do that too, but I'll let Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, I, I, again, we did look at the requirements for this particular policy to be in place, and did not find that to be the case. Felt there were redundancies in place. We, we are required of curriculum advisory, which we do have in place. And I would say that some of the work of that particular committee, in terms of it from an advisory perspective, we have brought a number of items that are staff development related to that committee, both currently in this past year and in previous years. So I could, I would say that that could be the spirit of, of that particular committee. And that committee remains in existence per policy 213.
So you're saying those responsibilities would go to the Teaching and Learning Committee? And the reason I ask is that, you know, I know, I understand what you're saying, the policy, I did the same research. Yeah, there's not a lot of districts that have this policy, but other districts do have an Advisory Staff Development Committee. And based on, you know, some of the things that I've heard about, concerns about professional development in our district, some, you know, teachers not being happy with what's being presented, and not really. I guess my question is, I think it would be beneficial, if it's in Minnesota statute, to establish an Advisory Staff Development Committee that the Board establishes as a committee, just like any of the other committees, like the Teaching and Learning Committee, or the Policy Committee, or the Finance Committee. And perhaps then we have to pull our policy 213 forward and add that to the list, or it could be an ad hoc committee, like we've talked about in the past.
I'm going to be pretty strong on this, the, the reason why, and I researched it too before we did it, because I sent in emails about the policy last time. And the majority of other districts actually delegate this to the, to the teaching and learning, and they do the, their own professional development and development work on their own. And that's where the majority of other districts do this, because it's not a board committee. And it's not a board ad hoc committee either in most every other district in the state, just because the Board isn't really qualified to do the oversight of what development and all that needs to be done at the educator level. So that's, and, and I, I stand firm with that, because that is not our business, really.
But you're, it, then how, can you help me understand why it says it right in statute, that the Board must establish an Advisory Staff Development Committee?
Well, the, there's a reason there's a law behind it. Well, you're reading, you're reading it very, very directly, and what happens is, like a lot of other things that we do, is we do delegate that to the administration to do that, and that is where the other. So even though it says that, we have opted to delegate that, and we have not gotten involved at that level, and neither has most other districts, as was discovered by, by that.
I would challenge that about neither other districts. I know a lot of board members from across the state, and there are boards that have it as an ad hoc committee. I guess my challenge is, or my push, as Dr. Thomas says, is that there's been professional development in this district that our teachers don't agree with. Isn't the right way to spend our money on the professional development that they're getting? There's been conversation about the half-days and the time that, the way that they spend their time versus professional development versus data analysis, and I, I believe if this was an ad hoc committee, there could be more feedback, I mean, do we have any committee that oversees this at this point?
We don't have any committee, we have our department that does oversee it. You know, speaking to the feedback on particular staff development days, each time we do our early release days, as well as our staff development days, we do gather that feedback, and we use that feedback to make adjustments to the subsequent staff development time or early release time. We've made a lot of adjustments this current year, given that it was our first opportunity to have monthly early release days. We adjusted the work that we engaged in on a monthly basis, and will continue to create that feedback loop. We have representatives, are built, to dive a little bit deeper, are built, each school has a built team that provides leadership and direction to their specific site needs, utilizing staff development, or staff meetings for particular staff development, work that needs to be done. But again, a lot of our staff development time spent, and we'll be giving more specifics on this related to the next, exactly two years, as we project out, are going to be somewhat dictated by the training that we are going to be required to provide for many of our staff in the implementation of the REACT. So there's going to be limited opportunity for flexibility around that.
So can we get a?
Can I just add one more thing, please? Can I, can I add one more thing, because I'm not finished with my thought? So thank you, so if I'm understanding correctly, there really is no committee. And again, under the statute, if you keep reading it, it says that a majority of the advisory committee and the site professional development team must be teachers representing various grade levels, subject areas, and special education, which we know is increasing in our district. The advisory committee must also include non-teaching staff, parents, and administrators. So it's written in the law that we should have this committee, and so if you're saying we're delegating it to our admin, and admin's saying we don't have a committee, how are we going to develop a committee in order to meet the statute?
So that's where you have the Learning Committee and the Special Education Advisory Committee taking parts of that. I'm going to, I want to get everybody else's feedback on this, Director Olstad? The policy 425, do you want to keep it or let it go per the administration's recommendations?
I'm, I'm fine with the district's recommendation.
Director Crosby?
Excuse me, I am also fine with the district recommendation, because I feel like a lot of it resides in teaching and learning and special advisory. I also feel like the important thing is that there's a feedback loop for staff, which we're getting. And nothing can stop a staff member from contacting the Board as well, or the Teaching and Learning Committee, or Special Advisory, so it's really making sure we have those feedback loops. In my mind, that's, that's the biggest piece, so we have that, it's available.
And my feedback is, is that I'm fine striking the policy, but then this needs to become part of the teaching and learning agenda, because it's never been on our agenda, any professional development, there's never been a conversation about professional development or teaching and learning.
I don't think, I think some of it is, yeah.
Maybe well, since I've been on it.
Well, like the REACT will be on there and stuff like that, but not all of it needs to be.
We've talked about the professional development around the implementation of math curriculum, for example. Spent a significant amount of time talking about that, this year's teaching and learning, I think two or three.
I don't think we've talked about the content of professional development, and what, what it is. So if that's going to exist there, then that's fine, then we can, then we know that we're at least following the statute, and we do those requirements.
Yeah. Director Burnet?
I support the staff.
Director Bullion?
I support the recommendation, but I also, I think it is, you know, it's in statute, like, just so that it is communicated out, how is it spread? How is it spread? So, yeah.
All right, so we've got the majority of the Board willing to move on and strike it as long as we continue doing what we've been doing. it as long as we continue doing what we've been doing. And next one is five oh four, student dress and appearance.
Yes, thank you. Student dress and appearance, we did have quite a few edits and suggestions. This also was a very robust conversation to the policy advisory committee, so I'm gonna take this as an opportunity. I know we have quite a bit of policy still to come through to you all, but we did have our final meeting for this year last week. And I just want to give a shout out to those committee members. They reviewed eighty-eight policies this year. So that is a huge time commitment from our committee members and they took it very seriously. They had amazing feedback, very robust, diverse conversations that helped us bring forward a lot of these recommendations to you throughout the year and will continue to as we go through the rest of the process with the rest of them. So just wanted to take that opportunity. I apologize that I didn't do that at the start, but I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work on all that. So the, the five oh four is a great example of some really robust conversations we had. You do see quite a bit of changes, or not, not a bunch of changes, but you do see some of the changes that we added in here. And there were other conversations that we, that we had that as the will of the committee didn't make it forward, but some pretty robust conversation around that.
If I could add on policy five oh four, I, there was lots of conversation at, in policy committee regarding that. I had some pushback regarding, my recommendation would be to take a more conservative approach. We, we went over, MSBA's model policy was also offered during policy committee for us to look at. I had stated that Minnetonka has a dress code policy that is very short, concise. And I appreciate how it's written, gives clear expectations and as well as clear accountability pieces to it. And so it is my recommendation to, or it would be, well, if I could, if I, I don't know that I have a recommendation, but as a board member, my recommendation is to look at having a little bit more conservative approach, something more prescribed, such as the Minnetonka policy, which says shoulder to shoulder and, you know, it's, it says where to cover to. There was a lot of, there was robust conversation on why that may work, why that may not. For me, it is as simple as avoiding distractions, not only for students, but also for staff and also to avoid the comparison trap that is a terrible thing. I mean, as an adult, comparison is, is something that is, you know, is not easy to deal with. And, and I think, yeah, for me, it's just distractions and, and being able to avoid the comparison trap that, you know, some styles might bring forth. So that was my comments on five oh four.
I would just say, I'm, I'm happy to hear you guys looked at the MSBA policy because once I, first of all, I, I looked at MSBA policy and I was surprised to see some of the things in the policy and probably, and impressed. And I, and it makes sense because then you don't have to look far. And there's other districts, Wayzata, Jordan, Minnetonka, there seems to be a trend going on out in the school districts of, of putting in more language into their policy that basically can definitely have an impact on the learning environment. And the one thing that I like the most about the MSBA policy, and this is brand new, it's because of the Minnesota legislature enacted the Crown Act, oh, that's something different, sorry. Anyway, basically, oh, it says MSBA is grateful to the Rono County School District, Virginia, for its permission to incorporate this image in model policy. And it basically has an image of a little character and it basically says on here that you must have straps, but then you must not, your entire area from whatever it is, armpit to thigh, must be covered with no skin shown. And that's pretty much what Minnetonka says as well. And so I can tell you, living my life in the fashion industry and living and breathing these conversations every day, I think it's, it's really important, well, it's important for kids to be able to express their, to express how they dress. I think it's also really important for a school district, particularly when it comes to like social emotional learning, to teach kids how to dress appropriately for the occasion. And there certainly is a difference between going to school versus going to the gym versus going to the beach. And the way our district, where our policy is written, and it says to make, to ensure that the, it meets the community standards, I think that's how it's written or was written, that, that the dress is appropriate for the community's standards. I mean, we live in a lake community, so does that mean that kids can show up in bikinis and board shorts? I mean, and when all said and done, we don't really have a lot of guidance in our policy, which I honestly think has impacted the behavior and in our middle schools and our high schools. And so I would also bear to say that, like I said, Wayzata has a great policy we can look at, Jordan has a really great policy we can look at, and then Minnetonka, as I would agree with you, has another great policy that we can look at. And that's my feedback on that.
So I will, I appreciate that and I, I would just add, both as an administrator in schools, as a parent of kids and having to work through this with their trend and how they dress and how I, as their dad, would want them to, to dress. So I can approach this with multiple advantage points as all of you can as well. I, I think the community standards does speak for itself because it also states that you would dress for the educational environment, you know, so a bikini or fringetrunks at the beach would not be educational context. I would also say, and I share this in our committee, that it's very clear, I think in our variety of districts that you all talked about, and I think in the MSBA policy or the one in Virginia, it's very clear what community standards are and that is, we don't want to see skin of private parts. And I think, I think how it was stated, armpits to thigh or armpits to whatever it was. So, yeah, and whatever we write, we're gonna have, we're gonna still have conversations with kids, okay? Let's just be honest. Because like even that conversation about the shoulders, if we can have straps, then shoulders are gonna be exposed. You know, and if you're wearing inappropriate tank top that has straps, then armpits will be exposed. So the whole terminology of shoulders to hips or armpits to hips will get violated by tank, uh, top, whatever, tank, whatever, because now I'm showing shoulders. So I just think we need to be realistic with ourselves in what administration pushed on this was what can actually be enforced. And I think it's, seeing the shoulder or shoulder blade compared to seeing, you know, a buttock or a breast are two different things for me, from a parent's standpoint and from an administrator's standpoint. So if we go with something more restrictive, I just want to be realistic of what can actually then be enforced through varied interpretation. Because I think the shoulder and armpit down is, is not gonna fly the moment somebody wears an appropriate tank top with straps, because that's what MSBA talks about. So I think private parts are the thing. And I think we all know what private parts are too. I, I wouldn't classify that as a shoulder.
Is a belly private parts?
And, and I think, is that what they call mid drift, mid rift, drift? So, riff?
Or belly button?
I like belly. I always call belly.
Belly button?
So, so here, here's what I would offer to the group. If, if the group is saying private parts from chest to buttocks or whatever, I think that encompasses the belly, then what's the grace, right? So when a student is wearing a shirt that maybe is right at their waistline, but if they reach, I now see the back or the belly. But if I'm walking normally, it doesn't show. But you see the nuances, so no matter what we set, context will matter. And so just keep that in mind as the board considers if you want to kind of capture, I think, that area that encompasses two of the biggest areas that we don't want to see on whomever the student is, then make it so that the administrators could distinguish a crop top, if that's still a thing, and your shirt is cut off right there and you're showing like ribs all the way down versus I've got a short, shorter shirt or perhaps my body frame is such that, you know, when I do move a certain way that something, you know, it's not, that, that's the dilemma, right? I, I, you know, that, that's the dilemma. And then I think another point that got brought up is, again, based upon body shape, two shirts could look very differently on a student that might have body developments in areas that maybe another student doesn't. And, and so how do we manage that? And again, I think administrations just don't tie our hands so that we can make some kind of calls in the field. That's, that's the big question.
I think the challenge, I was gonna say, I think the challenge right now, I'm sorry, the challenge right now is those calls aren't being made though, so.
Okay, all right.
So I think the other thing that the policy advisory committee from other representatives from the community, also staff members and administration, is the notion of adding the three to four inches really limits the ability for staff members to have those robust conversations with, with the students because then they end up being in a fight over was it three inches or not or was it four inches or not? And then instead of something being an actual conversation as a growth opportunity to talk about these are community standards that we have, we, we expect you to come dress respectfully, it turns into this battle of, well, this is, this was actually four and a half inches, so I'm fine. Or it says three to four inches, so then if it's three and a half, but it's not inappropriate because it has fringe everywhere. These are kind of some of the examples that they, they were sharing with us. So the boots on the ground conversations that they're able to have with the students, they felt our policy provided that opportunity to have those conversations to still get the same outcomes that they're hoping for in terms of appropriate dress and community standards, but without creating a battle with the student. That's just gonna, I mean, one of them just talked about that, which ends up sending students home versus a communication opportunity, learning opportunity that they could have based off of how the current policy is written with the recommendations that we have in there. So that was some additional feedback that the policy advisory committee, staff and administration and some other community members had in terms of the image, the limitations and the, the potential battles it could create versus the educational opportunities the present language presents.
Can I, I want to go back to something that happened last year. Dr. Thomas, I'd like your feedback on this. There was a change made on holding kids accountable to go into class at the high school. And there is some students who, oh, it feels like a prison now that we have to go to class. But I'm sure going to class has had an impact and a positive impact on students' achievement in our high school. And even though the students didn't like it, I feel like messaging to the parents, I mean, this is a parent partnership, but I can tell you one thing, if I say to my student, you should not wear a bra top with low waisted jeans, because they're really supposed to be made worn with high waisted jeans, you should not wear that to school, and my student looks at me and says, well, I can, because the school doesn't care. How can I even enforce that as a parent? You know, I look at it as similar to saying, I'm gonna tell my student, don't speed when you go out on the highway. And if there's no police officer there to catch them and enforce them, they're gonna speed like crazy. So it's, it's definitely in a partnership. And if we want to take a leadership role on this and help our admin to solve some of these, I call them, I don't know what they're called, micro issues or whatever, some of these issues that are having an impact on student achievement and, and teacher's ability to learn or teach, I'm sorry, I think messaging would be really key from your standpoint, so.
Well, I would say, yeah, if, if, if we talk about the areas that are of key mention, which I guess would include the, the belly, then I think keeping that community standards statement in here is gonna be really key for my coaching conversation to Director Herman's point as well. So we can talk about what community standards mean and reference that. So I just offer that to the board. I mean, again, I, I think we, we will, we will develop an enforcement model and expectation model as appropriate outlining and aligning to the policy, so.
And Jordan has this language in it, it says, inappropriate clothing and appearance includes, but it's not limited to the following, and they list it, short shorts, skimpy tank tops, tops that expose the midriff, are strapless or backless, exposure to underwear and/or clothing that is not keeping with community standards. So it kind of, it defines it, it's a little bit more definitive.
Director Atkinson, there's none other people that have been trying to speak and you just kind of.
No, I'm just trying to finish with.
No, I know, but there have been others.
Yep, and we have a lot of time, we have all night, we can talk about this. This is a very important policy that has, gets a lot of attention.
We do actually.
Director Crosby?
No, we do not.
No, we don't. Director Crosby?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts I just want to share. First of all, anything that comes out of policy committee, I'm gonna have a hard time going very much against what the recommendation is because we have administrators, we have community members, we've got a lot of input there. This might be an outlier for me. I feel like a little more direction for admin wouldn't be a bad thing. If they're feeling like it's supportive, if it's not too prescriptive, if the language is perhaps a little bit stronger to say, you know, we're not gonna be walking around in super, super, super inappropriate stuff, you know, I, of course, the details and the details in terms of what we want to include, but that's just kind of where I'm at on it. So.
The hopeful, Director Crosby, one of the conversations that was had at the policy advisory committee that asked Dr. Thomas and Director, sorry, Vice Chair Bullion to, to join into is the conversation around, we've had it overall as a policy advisory committee, the difference between policy and procedure and talking about how they use the student handbook to go into a little bit more details of the law stuff. So utilizing this policy to allow that flexibility to change, as, you know, we talked about the different styles that come up. Dr. Atkinson mentioned the, sorry, what'd you say, bra top or?
Oh, it's a bra top.
Bra top or like whatever the, the new mini short thing craze was, I can't remember other things we talked about. But utilizing the student handbook to get more prescriptive, defining what the community standards are so that we can keep up with the times without having to come back to policy. But that was just one of the other conversations that was had at policy advisory committee, if that helps your point or not, but additional feedback.
Director Olstad?
This might be unpopular, but I think we've spent, with everything else going on in this district, I think we've spent more time than we need to.
Well, I would actually, I would like to see it a little more defined and a little more restrictive personally. I agree with Director Atkinson as a parent, I have to go find the parent handbook. I, I do think that we can partner in a little better way. And it didn't take me very long to find that other districts in our area are being a little more prescriptive as well, not just MSBA, but, and I, I do agree, policy committee has worked very hard on it, but that doesn't mean that we can't have our opinions because we're not at those meetings. That would be the direction. I know we had some issues last fall, we got some emails last fall, so if you'd like to help with that.
No, I, I don't have anything to add. I feel like I shared, oh my God. Are you good? Yeah, I was telling you.
I, I gotta admit that even though it's not a popular thing to go against policy committee, I would like to see a little bit more prescriptive.
I would like to see a little bit more prescriptive language in there. And I've given that feedback before this meeting, so... So if there's a way that you can take this back, and I understand it may not be ready for the next board meeting, and I'm fine with that, and I think everybody else is in order to add.
When I take this back, can I get clarification if you mean take it back to the Policy Advisory?
To you, no, not to Policy.
Because we don't have any other meetings this, this year.
Right, I don't think we need to go back there just to see if there's any way.
Yeah, I think the feedback that I'm hearing tonight that I think we'll just, as an admin team, is bring in some illustrative examples that were just kind of shared with some other districts of clear and clear examples of short shorts, midriffs, where I came in for all those things. And I, and I think, I just want to make sure we say, but not limited to. These are just illustrative because fashionable change, trendful change.
But I want you to take a look at it maybe from the perspective because what I hearing from everyone here, and also as a parent who had kids in this age, where I was very specific and I would never let them leave the house with that.
Right, right.
Some parents may need a little help from, from a manual or something like that to kind of, and community standards are probably not really strong enough. We can do so.
Got it, so we'll put, we'll put some more specifics into the policy and then bring that back for your consideration on the second, on the second meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
Policy 509 dot one, there's very limited changes to this, just some file changes and then adding some of the standardization with Legal Guardian. Also just adding the, sorry, the words years old just to make sure it was very clear what we're referring to when we're talking about the children will not, who will not be five years old. Is that, that's the only part of my changes on that? Okay, no comments. Next one is 602, organization of school calendar and school day. Again, very limited changes to this. Just add some of the standardization that we've agreed to as Policy Advisory Committee and a school board, adding the legal references and cross-reference references as well.
I had a couple of thoughts on this policy. Just looking at other school districts, there was really a wide range of different policies on this one. And the one thing that, one, one district had the number of student contact days, like there should be this many student contact days. I don't know if that's necessary or not. The other thing I think that's really unique to our district is the half-day. And I didn't know if we needed to add anything in here or if half-days are still up for discussion. That's the, you know, that. And then also, how does, how does an e-learning day compare to a snow day as far as compensation for the employees? Because we, under H, e-learning days, H, we talked about how for e-learning days, everybody is continued to pay the full wage of hours. How does that compare to a snow day? I just was wondering.
So the, the first question, the number of, of days, student contact days?
Yeah.
I would not recommend us putting that in policy. Again, if we have to change that, it's already in different places. And there's, there should be one more thing that we would have to go back to, to update. I don't, I don't know that there would be substantial benefit from adding it either. The second question to clarify, when you say half-days, I'm, I'm assuming you mean the early days?
Oh, the early reduce days, early days, yeah, sorry.
So again, I don't foresee the need to put that in, in here because it still counts as a full student contact day for reporting.
Both of those, two topics, I just want to point out that, that there is a number of instructional hours that we need to abide by and make sure that by level we have met the instructional hours. So that's where the number of days, different districts might have a different number of days that they get to get to that number. But we always have to take into account the instructional hours.
And different, different districts go above the requirement. We're above the requirement as well.
In the elementary level and slightly above in the secondary level.
And then the third question, how does, how does this, what's snow day compare for H when it comes to compensation? So Inclimate Weather Day, the first day that it's closed per our contract with the teacher's contract, it's, it's a school closure, still receive compensation. And then additionally, those last round of legislation, they changed the statute that anytime we call e-learning day, then all staff have to receive their regular pay whether they're directly involved in e-learning or not. So we have, we have plans in place should we have had to have called e-learning days this, this year so that other departments have an opportunity to do professional development opportunities and other things safely during that time, also not wanting to put those staff members in unsafe position, had those plans in place. So those now are required to be paid. If we were to have an Inclimate Weather Day, like day two, and we chose not to call it e-learning day, I honestly would have to look into how we would have to determine that. We would contractually be obligated to pay those that have a contract for them on time. It'd be our time card and focus that we wouldn't be paying.
That was covered in the statute for e-learning and the adjustment after the COVID. Emily, you really, you need to tick off the cross-reference on that. That was left on there from before.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, moving on to continuous improvement of programs. Policy 604.
So there is quite a few of changes to this one to streamline and make it more of an efficient policy and not limit us to which programs are being reviewed. Also some cleanup language in here as well, and then just making sure that we have the review process a little bit better defined. I don't know, Dr. Edwards, you want to add anything to this? Or if Dr. Jean Bush is still here, she can add as well.
I, I think it's, it reflects our current practice. And again, it doesn't limit us to what we would define as programs. What about this is there?
And not committed to, if we felt the need to have to go and review off-cycle, we're not limited by that?
And not limited to a one-year limitation. So for example, the elementary specialist review, we took more than one year to make sure we did a thorough process and needed additional time in that step one. So changing that to be a step one, step two versus a year one, year two.
Yep. And I think that was, that was the case in each of the most recent program reviews that we've conducted, taken more than a year.
Question under A.
So it's one, two, three, General Statement of Policy, A. One, in the development of programs, a stakeholder committee will be established. Is that stakeholder committee the teaching and learning committee? You have the same question?
Nope, that's, that is a committee, an ad hoc committee for that particular program being reviewed. And it includes representation of those impacted by that committee or by that program specifically. So that's what we have done most recently and would tend to continue.
Right, and that information gained from that kind of content-specific would then be brought to our teaching and learning?
Just question with, with that comment. Is there, would it be clear communication to call it an ad hoc committee instead of a stakeholder committee? Would, would that clear up confusion?
Say that one more time, your bullion, or your bullion.
On number one, if we, if we named it, an ad hoc committee will be established rather than saying a stakeholder committee, would that clear confusion?
I, I think that might add to some confusion with ad hoc committees that come through board committee.
Okay.
We, I, we might want to consider, if you want to...
I have no idea.
Name it anything, I would name it a management committee.
Okay, but I, I have a question about that. I'd challenge that because it says that community members will be part of that committee.
It's still, yeah, they can still be a part, yeah, they may be, but not limited to. And, and I would just say whether it's, you know, you know, right now, our equity committee is a management committee. Our, you know, that, that is something that we do have community in, not a board committee. So if you want to name it something, otherwise it stands as, as a...
I think you just mentioned that it's a stakeholder. I think it means those that are impacted by it.
Great.
It gives a flexibility.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to confirm, I have a proper understanding. We circled around to leaving it as is.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So Policy 607, cross-size, very limited, just some cleanup language. Six ten, field trips. One of the things we wanted to make really clear in here and calling out what's already been done in practice is just ensuring that the building principal is in consultation with Student Support Services Administration when working through different field trips, so adding that language. And then on page two, just making a little bit more clear what the, what the general regulations for the field trips would be. Then if you go down to the specific regulations for magnitude field trips, adding quite a bit of the regulations that apply, apply to that under both, sorry, B and C. B, and then some changes in additions to the pre-departure checklist and emergency procedures checklist in addition to the standard addition of the legal references and cross-reference.
You know, I used to see this a lot in the permission stuff and the documentation that came along with some of the field trips to students. And I like the detail. I'm just wondering if all this detail in the policy, how do we have... Is this also procedural?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too. It's a lot of, yes.
Don't get me wrong, I always like detail, but I just don't know if we're crossing over into procedure into everything else here.
Well, and to that point, to C, actually it's called procedures for. I wonder if we can do a six-one-oh-point-one and kind of the procedure part of it listed under that part.
I wouldn't put procedure in any of the policies per se, but if this is...
So I'm hearing the will of the board is to separate the procedures into a procedural document to be linked to all the policy?
Yes. Actually, I would prefer if the procedures weren't part of the policy.
No, those link below the website.
Yeah. Because they won't consider policy. This is... Any feedback for six-ten?
My only question was on the very last form called the Major Magnitude Field Trip, Alcohol Screening Acknowledgement. It says that we have acknowledged and read Policy 506.3, but I believe that we changed Policy 416, and I don't think there is a 506.3 anymore.
But I know we changed...
Just to be transparent, we didn't look at the, the form. I think it's one of those that's just automatically attached to it. So we'll have to, once we have the policy review done, we'll have to go to the form and, and update that. But thank you for that call, and I'll note that to, to look at the form afterwards. Just one more second, just because I'm having some discussions about a future major magnitude trip with students. Do we say in here anywhere that like... One, I guess one thing that was said at the presentation was like, between now and this major magnitude trip, kids have to keep their grades up, they have to stay out of trouble, like, and it was highly emphasized the vaping. Like, if you get caught vaping or doing drugs or anything, you can't go on this trip. Is there anything in this policy that says that? It was just, it was interesting when I went to the presentation on the trip. I thought that was a really great incentive for kids to... I don't recall that being in this policy, Director Atkinson. I'm wondering if that's part of our discipline policy or student handbook? It is, it does follow the disciplines, so.
I think, yeah, maybe.
It does on, what would become procedures theoretically as in the major magnitude details, pre-departure checklist, number nine specifically speaks to behavior problems and calls out tobacco, drugs, or alcohol.
Yeah, and it fell under MSHSL as well. Yep, okay, thank you. Thank you, sorry.
And that's referred to on the trip.
Well, that's on the trip though, yeah. There wasn't anything pre, to the trip.
I don't recall anything in this policy about pre-trip.
I wonder if it's under the MSHSL guidance of, I mean, maybe that's implied, which probably isn't great either, but of your first infraction means you're out, you know, for an event or whatever. Maybe that event is the trip.
Should that be in the cross-reference for the policies?
But it probably should be referred somewhere.
From a procedural standpoint, we'll want to review that. Most typically, a high school, yeah. Most typically, a high school experience, major magnitude. That being said, we have had them at the middle school level in the past. So reviewing with the building administration who oversees that, what procedures are put in place. Should somebody have a violation that's not a state high school league violation?
Right.
They aren't a part of a state high school league-sponsored event, so therefore they wouldn't be penalized. Do we apply those rules to this? That's the procedural monitoring.
Well, and I think truly, like, if a child is planning to go on a major magnitude trip and then have a violation, a vaping violation or whatever, and district says, well, you can't go because of that, and then they go, well, it's nowhere in policy. Where can I find that? You know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, they said the same thing with the DC trip. They made it very clear that you will behave from now until DC.
Yes, I thought it was a great incentive, I mean, like...
Yeah, no, yeah, but my point is middle, middle school trips.
Is that by policy typically, or is it typically procedural?
Procedural, procedural, general question.
So what are we telling Director Herman? If that's procedural, do we need to add it in here due to the cross-reference to the, make sure that all the discipline policies are in here?
I think it could probably be added to the procedural piece.
Yeah, you could, because right now, in policy, under General Statement of Policy 3A, in that first purple, whatever color that is paragraph, so it talks about the school administration is responsible for providing detailed procedures for all trips, blah, 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 supervision cost, and other factors deemed important and in the best interest of students. And so if I as an admin say, you know what, you were vaping and I don't believe it's in your best interest to attend because the last thing I need is you vaping while we're in DC with limited supervision, then you're, you're not going to, to go. Or if you got into a fight, you know, recently, I can make that discern. It's not specific to, the administration has the ability to institute that.
But the policy supports it.
The policy supports it here, and I think allows the conversation for an admin to say, Michael's not going. And parents, here's why.
And, and in the presentations that staff give to parents, like in a parent meeting, it is in writing as well, there too, that you will behave from now until...
It's a contractor source.
So it's in writing there too, yeah.
And that was in the all fields, it's not just in regulations for...
This is part of regulations for field trips and, and that would apply to mag, major magnitude because it's still a type of field trip.
Six thirteen, really no changes to this, clean up. Six thirteen dot one. I would ask in six thirteen dot one, we don't have, I mean, a lot of this is state, correct? For the credit transfer or...
Yes, the, we have our local credit requirements. There are state standard requirements. We have to obviously have our local credit requirements be at least the minimum. We have to obviously have our local credit requirements, be at least the minimum state standard requirements. But we might have credit requirements above and beyond that, which a transfer student would come in. And if they want to graduate with our diploma, they need to meet our requirements.
Okay.
And/or interpreting, you know, if another district offered something above or beyond the standard, and would we take that in as one of ours? We could make that determination to take that credit in and say, yup, that meets this class that we typically offer, that's unique to us as well.
And how does this impact international students?
They get an honorary diploma.
Okay.
They are here to get official paralegal high school diploma.
Policy six oh six. Just some cleanup, updating the language and making sure that it's aligned with other policies and adding the legal reference and cross references.
I just have one thing, is that I don't think we have a tieback to two oh one on this policy. So, six one, six, okay, policy six one six. Do you go through a couple pages, and you get to the very last page where it says officers in rules? Rules? In policy two oh one, it kind of defines what the committee director roles are into assisting the admin. And we don't really have anything in here that talks about it. It basically says that the executive director of academic services or the superintendent designee will chair the committee, when in our other policy, it says that the school board members will partner with admin and the superintendent to chair the committee.
Why don't we just refer to the committee policy in general, instead of trying to repeat any of it here, since I see a lot of the details from cross...
I agree, I just think we need a tieback to that policy and pass the cross-reference at the end. Because that committee policy sort of defines the committees.
Well, it's not just that, it's like, why would we duplicate it here, give one more place to have it updated?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Any other feedback on six sixteen? Six twenty, getting minor updates and adding those all in cross references. There's no changes to this one.
I thought we took out weighted grading in general, I wanted to ask that, but it wasn't part of the communication afterwards.
We modified it to be as the current definition of which courses specifically. It used to be a more exhaustive list of courses.
Okay.
Any course that was designated as...
Honors.
Honors, yup.
Can you give...
By definition, we wanted to clarify that it was only these types of courses. That's my understanding, policy revision happened before my time.
It's not my, it's not my role, but I've never been a fan of weighted grading, but that's... Extra credit hours is one thing, but anyways, I think that's out of scope.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I received quite a bit of feedback from the gifted and talented folks, and that there was quite a few people that are upset that the honors classes were not weighted. Students, parents.
It's out of scope, so...
So, well, it's not out of scope, because we could add it back here if we wanted to as a board.
Well, no, because it's out of scope, because it's part of the curriculum meeting, and they come out of it, and they already made the decision.
We didn't review this policy.
Pardon me?
We didn't review this policy.
No, all it says is that what was pretty much came out of that, because that was part of the initial part of that discussion, and then...
We did not revisit it, no, that's correct. Because it was a relatively recent change, didn't feel...
Six twenty one dot two, just cleanup. The report will be published in the Paralegal American and Savage paper.
Oh, yeah.
Do we know, did that pass, or do we...
Not as of yet.
But it's...
Worst case scenario, it'll come across by mid-May, but everything's tracking, that's not across the finish line.
Okay. We don't have Savage, we don't have that anymore, the Paralegal American Savage paper. So where will the honor roll be published?
Likely our website.
Our website.
The statute will allow us to use our website as our means of communication.
So I have a suggestion, because we do mention it on here where it's going to be done, do you want to just pull this until, and then revisit it after we get the decision? They're pretty sure they're going to approve putting it on the website.
We can hold it back.
I don't think that the honor roll is something that we have to by statute post anywhere, though. I think that we're just saying we post it on the website.
This isn't governed by a statute, so I think we're safe to change this policy to say that we'll be posting it on our website.
Just going forward.
Oh, yeah, okay, that makes sense, okay.
That makes sense, thank you for that, I wasn't thinking straight.
So we do send the Laker connections out to every household. Is it something that could be published in the Laker connections?
Yeah, we could just say through PLSAS Communications, and that could mean...
And that way it gives flexibility to...
Whatever that is.
Yeah. I know Grandma, Grandma sometimes is really excited to see her, the paper and whose name is in it.
Do we put it in connections?
I was just saying, I was also...
Are halfway in?
Well, now we might have to look at some alternative methodologies if it's not the newspaper, so...
The honor roll we have in school board scholars we have, though.
That's what, okay, thank you.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah. I know, I'm seeing the list. That's the last of the policies, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, moving on, Director Herman. Nope, that's for the next one, sorry, that's, that's right.
So just a, sorry.
Go ahead.
Strat plan update. We have finished our round two of engagement. We had our core planning team meeting just last week, and we had them working on reviewing the current mission, the set of core values, as well as putting together an initial framework of some strategic priorities. Very, very robust conversation, and I will say, there were some leaning in conversations where folks could have easily turned away from one another, and they could kind of own that publicly in the space. I really appreciate our community for sticking through all that. And the senior team will now put together, based upon their initial framing, a draft for them to respond to next time we come together as a core planning team, incorporating all of their feedback. And I'll just say two things that really are going to be important for our community to understand, and that is, the strategic plan, as I shared that night, is full of language, and language is generative. It creates and coordinates action. And it has to be inviting enough where everyone can find their entry point into that conversation. So, being mindful of the language that's used in that plan, that focuses on everybody accessing, having access to it, versus it being another divisive document. And so, that is something that we'll be mindful of, to ensure that it's accessible enough, while also maintaining the meaningfulness behind the plan, that it will set a course for generations to come. And I just shared that many organizations have longstanding documents, strat plans. The goals may change based upon their priority areas of focus, but like, your mission, values, et cetera, like, those are tried and true. So that's something that I really wanted to make sure that our community understood. And then also, conversations around academics was big. It was big throughout the entire conversation, and I can't stress this enough, and I kind of joked about it that night, but all seriousness, I said, if academics didn't rise to the top, I'd be concerned, right? So I want to assure our community, we are not going to abandon academics in our conversations with the strategic plan. And the accountability that comes along with it is governed by state statute. So that's another thing, that it's there. And so, again, I think we've got a good information set to go ahead and move forward with a draft for them to really begin to dice up, and then we'll kind of close out some of their work with some vision, and kind of finalizing the draft will be brought to you all in May, I think end of May as well. So, really, really excited about how we're kind of bringing this plan in for landing.
I have a question about the strat plan. So, at what point does the survey go out to the community? About sending a survey out to the community on the strat plan to get the community's feedback? I know we held, we held the community meetings, but in order to meet, meet...
Yeah, so...
The wider scope, and now with the paper going away, it makes it really even harder to communicate that survey.
Yeah, so we actually had some discussions about feedback on kind of the strat planning process and kind of components of that. And there was correlations to our stakeholder-studer survey data that we can draw upon as inputs into that process that elicit the same kind of theme that we would generate. Our initial thinking was to go out on round two with a community-based survey. But after our core planning team meeting, we actually felt engaging around the further prioritization of themes was the way to go, knowing that our community was surveyed to death at this point. And so we decided to utilize the studer survey as a data point, both with our teachers, who also didn't come to a lot of the sessions, our parents, and then also some of our students, so that we're going to leverage that data that we have there, that we can also bring into that conversation, versus a standalone, separate data information gathering survey process, because we would almost be redundant in asking some of the same types of questions that the student-studer was covering.
Except for the studer stakeholder survey did not go to our community. And the reason I know this is because I have neighbors...
Right, it went to, it went to people who were...
It went to parents. So I have neighbors who've been asking, when's the survey coming? Because we talked about it. And we talked about making it secure, that we would have to put in their address or something. So that's what I'm asking for, I mean, this is the community's plan, these are taxpayers' plans, so... I remember specifically having those conversations about that.
So I'd be curious, from the board's standpoint, at this, at this stage, for the initial framework of the plan, we could structure a community-based response on that initial framework, to see if we captured kind of the essence of what we heard throughout the engagement session. We may still be able to do that, and see what kind of turnout we will get from that, as a possibility to garner that.
So, I have a question, what, so I know that we talked about another plan going forward at the core meeting, and there's a plan and a schedule that was listed on the site. What are the next steps that were listed there?
The next step is that we would come back to the core plan, where they would put together their initial draft that would be ready to be presented to the board as a draft. And then, the board would then look at the draft and provide perspective, that information from the board, and go back to the core planning team to incorporate the perspectives learned from the presentation with the board, and then coming back to the board in June for the final presentation.
Okay. Because I don't remember a community survey going out at that, but I remember having community meetings...
Yeah, I had, I had mentioned that in round two.
Okay.
And again, at that time that we're in round two, we had just come off the studer, and so just the survey fatigue that was out there in our community, granted, that was to our parent group, not general business owner, who has no kids or whatever in our district.
We talked about the stakeholders.
So, the opportunity to do something like that would be, would be in the window to, the window, getting ready to present to the board, and then to use that survey feedback with board feedback for the final revisions that would go into the plan. So that's something I can talk with the team about, and I know, I think it's Thursday is our conversation this week, to see where we might be able to incorporate that.
I am worried about survey fatigue, and I'm worried about...
Yeah, we may not get a lot, but we can possibly push it that way.
Our community hasn't gotten a survey on this, and when Jordan did their community plan, they had, they had a very secure survey, where you put in a code, or they got a code or something. I mean, I know you and I had many conversations about this, so I think, I like the idea of before it goes, you know, as the core plan is developed, that you could go do a survey from the community.
So my question would be...
And then, then go back to the survey.
If we've already solidated, if that was...
So, I think it's, we would have the structure, for lack of a better term, well, yeah, it would be a survey on the draft, to ensure that, did we capture, so we'd have the structure, our questions around the draft, and in the components, and there's four general components. And so that, that's how we would, similar to what we would be presenting to the board. And so, so that, that's how we could structure it.
So I guess...
It's not new data, it's feedback on the draft.
So it's the four areas, do you like it or not? I mean, I guess, I don't know if that's...
Well, I'd have, I'd, we'll talk about that this Thursday, and I can, you know, share it with you all as another update coming, because we'll be able to do that.
Okay, the other thing I'm wondering is, given the time, and how that would actually work, and how you would get feedback, other than a grading system on what's already been chosen? It just doesn't...
Yeah, well, let us, let us kind of think around that.
Well, there could, I suppose there could be somewhere where it could be, you know, is there anything we're missing? What's a hot topic or whatever?
Well, I mean, there, we actually had a really good structured activity that night around what resonates, what, what may be concerning, what might be missing. And I think that, that would be something, and we could just do that for each of the core module, or the sections.
Because I think it would be, if we could do something like that, then getting a broader perspective, because we did have kind of a limited group. So, that would be, that would be good, if we can afford it, if we can do it in time. What do you guys think?
We'll talk to the team, see, you know, see what's feasible.
So I hear the affirmations, and so we'll work through the logistics of that, and see how we can replicate what we did the other night with the core team on that one activity, but for each module.
And the next core team meeting is May seventh, and you have one May twenty eighth, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we would have, so we would have this data coming back to the core team on May twenty eighth.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so informational items. We will be moving our regular meeting from Veterans Day to November eighteenth, and then the study session on November twenty fifth, for the month of November coming up. I think that's the only informational thing that I have. And then the next thing is future agenda topics. Does anybody have any future agenda topics?
I think I do. I have to remember how I, so I was, I was wondering about a future agenda topic around how the board governs itself. There has been community reaching out to the board on how the board governs itself, and so, just to kind of give direction on, or explain maybe, give some more clarity, not necessarily revisiting our, our policy... not necessarily revisiting our, our policies. I mean, it obviously, we're driven by policy, but just giving some overview on, on that. That was, that was the suggestion I had.
So, so as an agenda item on a study session, actually review for the public?
How, how the board governs itself?
So just review with like the MSBA, the guidelines are of the board?
Dr. Thomas, do you remember the conversation we had?
I, I remember what you're.
I hold notes on it, I can't, I don't know where I went.
Here's what I'm wondering, because I, I thought about, I thought about this in our one-on-one. So I, I think the, the public, I think, may have some wonderings as to how the board operates, okay? Just kind of like the mechanics of the board. And you're accountable to your, yourselves by, by way of your policy, your 200 level policies. And if a community member is asking a question about, well, what happens if board member X does Y? And that has come up from time to time. Or they're just asking questions to the board about process of decision-making, et cetera. So my wondering is, not so much a board study session, is that something as part of your board retreat that you will engage in? Because that's a natural process by way of your, how you're governing yourselves, it's your, it's your learning time, you know? And that might be a good medium by which you all have discussion around how you operate as a board, because you're talking about your rules of engagement. And so not only is that good for all of you to kind of level set with one another, but it helps inform the community about how the board works. So you kind of have a two-for-one. So that was my thinking when you shared that.
I appreciate that, because I don't think that my, my, the thought of that came from like necessarily wanting to add a study session, you know, noodle that around, but more just kind of a public's, having the community have a chance to be able to hear how we do that. I don't know. It wasn't very eloquent.
But isn't a board retreat not important?
A what?
Our board retreats are not like, they're open to the public, but we don't record them.
No, they're, they're.
They're available to the public.
But they're, they're available to the public.
So if it was shared that a board retreat was giving that type of information, community members would.
Wanted to learn about that.
Yeah, so, and I'm totally open to that. It's just something that.
You want to do it as a topic as part of, because we've got topics. So when Braver Angels comes in to facilitate our work group, we have to give them topics of various. So we had a couple of them. Do you want to add that in as a topic? We, we will have three topics. We already have the levy discussion, and then we have DEI, and then we could add this one.
It might be a good, it might be a good space for it.
Who do you, anybody?
Again, that's just a suggestion, and I'm open to the, what, what, you know, anyone has to say about it.
I don't feel strongly either way. I mean, they're, they're out there to, you know, the policies are out there to read, and we review them, but, I mean, do people know where to go? Do they know what to look for? Do they understand exactly how boards work, school boards work?
Well, I think there is some confusion. I, I will admit there's some confusion about what we can control and what we can't because of how we work.
Yeah.
And governance versus management, and that the superintendents are only employee. We don't, we can't just go into a school and say, do something different, that sort of thing. And I think there's some confusion about the power that we have.
And then it's probably more inside.
But that sounds kind of more like a website update with just rules and things to us. I don't know. Well, we can discuss it offline and maybe come back with a more refined.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the topic is really, how do we do a better job educating about our process? Christie, you know, is there, a lot of, a lot of school districts have caricature videos about roles of boards. You know, I know MSBA provides those too, so maybe that's the conversation.
Sounds good. You okay with that?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that. I, you know, again, it was just with community members reaching out to the board with questions on certain things, I thought maybe it would be a space for, and again, not maybe for a study session, and open to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Okay.
I have something, I'm just waiting. Oh, no, sorry. I would like to, sooner than later, and this kind of goes back to our strategic plan of each one of us, board members, holding each other accountable for our actions and our words. And I would like to have a conversation about board chair communication and the protocols surrounding that. When we first started, we received a document about the protocols regarding communication. And right here in this document, it really defines how communication is handled, and particularly, it defines messages that are sent on behalf of the board. And right now, we have a bounce back email that when an email does come into the school board, it says that they will, this person will receive a response in three days. That timeline has not been met. There's multiple emails that have not been responded to. And I, I know as someone who has emailed before to the board, you have, you're taking the time and the thoughtfulness to, and you've gone through maybe all the channels to get to the board, it, they deserve a response, regardless of who they are and what they're saying. And so that hasn't been consistent since the beginning of the year.
I have a question really quick. Does it say that the board chair is going to respond in three business days or three days on the response?
I don't get those. Christie, do you?
Um, I'd have to look at that to make, be sure I can't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, because I've never gotten that.
It, it does. Or it says, or three days, or as soon as possible. And so there's a handful of emails, March, April, that haven't been responded to. And so I understand Chair Franz, you know, you're busy, I get it. If we need to talk about, does someone else need to take on that responsibility? I just, I think as a board, I mean, I think there needs to be, there's room for improvement on, and if we need to change the procedure, then we can talk about changing the procedure. But right now, I don't believe, I don't feel that the procedures are being followed.
So you would like a board discussion on an agenda topic about the board chair's Does anybody else want to? Fan, or thumbs up?
Are you just asking about?
Yeah, I would.
Communication from the board? Because when you send in an email, it doesn't say it's going to be answered by the chair. It says.
The email will be responded to within three days, and I understand.
It doesn't say on there by the board chair. So I think if you're going down a conversation, think about board communication.
We may want to revisit the three-day thing.
Yeah.
And that's, that would be the topic to put on, yeah.
I didn't even know it was on there, because we don't have that in policy.
The bounce back, you're saying?
Yeah, I've never seen that. When I emailed the board too, I've never seen the three-day.
It's, it's on there. And so, and if, and if somebody emails in, they deserve a response.
Christie, do you know for sure if it's on there?
Well, so I'm, I'm looking at the email communication protocols that we have. Says, in most cases, within three business days, the school board chair writing on behalf of the entire board will reply with a specific response to your message. But I'm not sure what we have as the outgoing email right now.
So, so that's just in the general protocol, and in most cases, not all?
Yeah, it says in both cases.
Okay. But sometimes I do have to send them through to administration and get their advice and find out what's going on?
I can check with IT and what that message is, that is auto-generated.
Okay. Because I don't remember it saying that in the auto-generated, the, the, the message that comes back. But I think that's what needs to be revisited.
I did, I know it got in the back.
Huh?
I'm not sure it says that. It does say three days or as soon as possible.
Maybe it's something that could be handled offline?
Sure, handle it in conversation.
Get the topic.
Well, and I think if, if somebody sends an email in, should they expect a response?
Well, we are either having a future topic conversation.
Oh, oh, right, right, right. Okay, sorry, sorry. We're getting in the weeds. Okay, sorry. I mean, I think it could go to a study session. It doesn't need to, we don't need to waste our time at a board meeting. We have lots of important things to discover, but a study session, I think we could talk about that.
And I think we, I personally would, the three, the three days, it's like somebody sends something on Monday and they expect a message back by Wednesday, especially with some of these questions that we have that are multiple paragraphs long is not, is not feasible, but it doesn't say for sure. It just says, you know, ask whenever possible, or in most cases, so.
Did we have the topic?
So do we have the topic? We should probably discuss that. Said, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
Board communication.
Yeah.
Board communication.
Protocol. Okay, so board communication. Email. Okay. All right. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, saying nothing, we are going to close this meeting and adjourn to a, to a regular session meeting. And in so doing, let's go ahead and take no more than a five-minute break, is that going to be good enough? This is how we reported to 10. And then if, if we're going to stay here to do the, win our session. Okay. Hey. Okay, it is 9:52. We are going to bring the regular business meeting to order. Everyone stand and say that flag.
Flagellations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all board members are present except for Director Velasquez. And I'd like to get an approval of the agenda, and a motion to approve the agenda. So, so by Director Crosby and Directors Bullion. Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
That passes six-zero. And start up for business items. First item is going to be personnel items. I'm going to pass this over to Director Herman.
Thank you.
And I need an approval, right? A motion to approve? Okay, so, motion to approve the business items and our personnel?
So need.
Okay. Director Vernick, and who else? Holston?
Crosby.
Crosby, okay. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the board. As we discussed earlier in the evening at the work session, there's additional special education student needs that have led to a need for additional staffing for next year that go above and beyond what the current, the current staffing allocation is, or bringing them forward to you for official additional staffing request. For the, the positions that we currently know we already need right now based off of evaluations that have already been completed and enrollments that are already in the system. So this first one is a review of the certified staffing requests based on those needs. We use a generic costing model for our teacher, teaching positions that takes the average salary times the fringe benefits for this. That's where the number 120,700 comes from, as a standard costing model that we use for all of our certified positions, knowing that some may come in lower than, or higher than that. It's just a average that we utilize when we're costing out FTE.
Any questions?
I have a question. Can you help understand what the one-time federal funding will be?
And that was the carryforward from federal IDEA money that we talked about earlier, that we're increasing the federal dollar revenue that will pay for these positions.
Any other questions? All right, so all in favor for the board-approved certified staffing?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, that passed, passed the six-zero. Okay, next.
Herman? Oh, it's a little bit out of order, sorry. We're, we're switching over to Community Education Program Assistant. This position, at the request of the Community Education Department, will be funded through the general, the O4 Community Service Fund. It's additional staffing needs to run their summer camps and office support, to ensure that they have the proper support for their morning camp, afternoon camps, and student supports in between, with lunch and recess responsibilities. Also will help observe and assist the youth camps, and assist with the marketing and social media accounts, taking calls, registrations, so on and so forth, that they don't have the staffing that they have during their regular school year to support this. So this would be additional staffing needs over the summer to help ensure that this program runs smoothly.
Okay, we have to take a motion on this initially, so can I have a motion?
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That passes, oops, sorry, I keep on doing that. Six-zero. I don't know why. It's fine. I can't get it out my hands. And then the next topic is also yours, Director Herman, for approval of educational support staffing. So before we get started on that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So need.
Okay. By Director Atkinson, and second, second by Vernick. Okay, go ahead.
Same topic that we covered with the certified staff for special education. These are the corresponding student support, or sorry, the special education paraprofessional positions that are needed, requesting four center-based paraprofessionals throughout the system, and one resource paraprofessional throughout the system, again, to support those additional student support, or, sorry, special education student needs. And the, the same concept that they'll be coming from the one-time carryforward of the general, of the federal funding, but the remainder coming out of the general fund.
Questions?
My question was just based on, for the, for the four full-time, what's FTE, full-time?
Equivalent.
Yeah, equivalent. $180,000. I was just doing some quick math. That would be $45,000 per year for four paraprofessionals, which would be 2163 per hour on a 2,080-hour work year. Is that how we do that? Like, I'm, I, okay, so if I can make my question easier to understand, how do we, how did we come up with $45,000 per year for the four, for the four employees?
So the calculation, we take an average hourly salary. There's, I think, 141 staff in this bargaining unit. We take the average salary. They do not work 20, 80 hours.
Right.
Most of them are, at the most, they're six hours, or six and a half hours a day, at most 173 days a year. So we'll just take an average of, average hours, average number of days, average hourly rate, and, and then add fringe benefits on there.
Okay.
And then it gets to $45,000.
Okay, thank you. I, I was wondering if it, if it included benefits?
Yes.
As a pair, as a former paraprofessional in the district, I was like, I was just, that, it didn't compute, and so thank you for your.
Fringe benefits are included.
Thank you.
About 42%.
Thank you.
And that would be the same for the certified positions we just went through. There, that also includes salary and benefits in that total costing model.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes six-zero. Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting and transition to the closed meeting in accordance with the opening meeting law for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. Motion to approve.
Motion to.
Motion to, yeah, I need a motion to, to adjourn.
So, me.
Second.
And, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes six-zero. We're going to stay right at this table, go directly into the closed session.